I don't know what's in the minutes. On the meeting, no anything to add? They did conduct irregular business. We needed an executive session to discuss matters regarding the construction and design of the building. And after that, when they came out, I don't believe they made any recommendations. And then they had committee updates.
We'll let you know that we are -- the TIF review committee has not met yet with the financial advisor. So we're still waiting on the proposal for our consideration, and we'll keep you posted Does counsel have any questions? Item E is the Alba Airport Commission meeting on March 12, 2018. We had our regular counsel and managers' reports, approval of minutes, et cetera. We also received an update on the Wings Over the Prairie Airshow. It seems that things are -- there's a planning committee working on that with city representations, airport board representation, as well as private involvement in helping to pull off that event. Really, it's getting close. June's going to be here before we know it. We had discussion and action on the remodel of the terminal building, and that was actually for approval of repairs and painting on the outside of the building. And that was approved for, I believe, shady lays and painting. I don't have the amount written down.
$5,600.
$5,600. They're going to pressure wash and prime, replace any damaged woodwork on the outside of the building for that amount. We --
Are they going to try to leave by the airshow?
Yes. They estimated weather permitting, a week to two-week turnaround or --
Week to a half.
Week to -- yeah. And on that is weather permitting and on a start date. So I think it will be no problem having that completed by the airshow.
I will be getting in touch with them this week to --
Schedule?
To schedule and see when that start date will be, and thus the termination -- yeah, the completion date.
Okay. We did not take action to -- we didn't -- just a brief discussion on the purchase of the Jump Start APU unit. The airport had purchased a charger sufficient to encompass the needs of the airport, so we didn't take any action on that. We did approve to -- or we did direct staff to get us options for springing or shotting the new turf runway. And we'll be looking to have a dedication event during the airshow flying. We discussed possible reorganization of staffing in order to accommodate more hours of operation and possible 24-hour call coverage. We directed Joe Don to give us some more information on a variety of options, including city staffing, as well as contract management options. We had an executive session regarding the airport manager, Greg Murray, which the board took no action. And then we heard remarks from citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions that counsel might have. Anything you want to add, Joe Don?
No.
Item F is the cemetery meeting from -- I lost it. March 14, 2018. We have a cemetery board member with us, but I don't think she came prepared to speak. But you're more than welcome to if you'd like.
Well, I just have a few things, but Joe Don can do that if he wants to.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. We took care of our regularly scheduled meeting, our regular stuff, finance report, chairman Sexton, business managers' report. We did hear a presentation from Craig Jones regarding the Navy Retired Veterans Plaque, and we are working on putting something together to better maintain those plaques. We also heard the -- had some discussion on the development of a policy to regulate memorial tree maintenance and removal and maintenance replacement. And we will be having a formal written policy on that by the next meeting. There was some discussion on the Garden Triangle Rehabilitation Plan, where Ms. Martin may be able to provide more information on that in detail, because that's her project she's been working very diligently on. Had some slight discussion, but no real action on the development of electronic map. Some discussion on this and start to put together a self-guided walk-in tour at the cemetery. The idea is to start with the tombstone tour that they did last October and see how that builds. See how that builds. And there was also some action -- there was a discussion and action on developing a policy to trade burial blocks. And then the cemetery board also had some discussion on reorganization and staffing. Ms. Martin, if you'd like to talk more about the Garden Triangle, I can certainly yield the floor to you on that issue.
The Garden Triangle was kind of an eyesore. It had rocks and a lot of dead plants in it. Chris, our Sexton, burned it out last year and cleaned it out. And Tom Crenshaw and I got together to make a plan on what to put in there, to hopefully have blooms, rose bushes, and some blooms already starting by Mother's Day and to be in full bloom by Memorial Day. There are other planters around that if we don't make other plans for around the flagpole, we'll probably be looking at that also to plant flowers. We chose knockout red, double knockout roses, because they grow, there's low maintenance, the red is stronger, and that's what Tom recommended. So that's what we're going to put in. And Tom is going to do the planting. He's going to amend the soil and plant the roses.
Does counsel have any questions? Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Joe. All right. Item G is the finance committee meeting on March 19, 2018. Dr. Hanford?
We reviewed and signed our claims, some of our large claims besides payroll and the general fund. We had the in-car cameras for a little over $12,000, a large purchase of the gas and oil, $24,000, our paint striper, $8,000, the airport fund, gas and oil again, close to $19,000, our shade structures at the AEDA fund, almost $73,000. And then our newly OWRB construction fund paid our first payment to Wing Construction for $110,000. We talked briefly our capital outlay projects, our belly dump trailer. We'll talk more about that, that is on the agenda tonight. We did talk about possibly buying a new -- or another, not a new, but a Packer truck for sanitation. We could have gone back and forth from purchasing next year or purchasing this year. That's the one that doesn't require the CDL, which will be helpful for us finding drivers. Talked a little bit about long-term construction and maintenance for our wastewater, kind of priorities, what's coming first. Briefly discussed some possible grants that we'll be working on. You can see those on the agenda and for how much. The financial report, all that Joe Don talked about here in a little bit. And then discuss some on the water tank construction project. And that is my report, and answering questions if you have any.
Does counsel have any questions, Dr. Hanford? Thank you, Bill. Item H is the city mayor's report. By the time we meet again, the annual lieutenant governor's turkey hunt will have been wrapped up and in the books. And so during the second week of April, we will be welcoming a big number of business owners and developers and other types of industry leaders into our neck of the woods for the purpose of recruiting them to expand or develop operations in our area. I anticipate that you all will be receiving invitations to attend one of the public dinners, and so if you're able to make it, that would be great. There will be opportunities to -- there will be an RSVP process, so there will be opportunities to see what's going on with that. We anticipate the lieutenant governor will be there, Dr. Newton will probably be there, as well as Senator Murdoch, in addition to many people from our area with economic development. We -- I want to thank everybody for both the staff, as well as the council members and board members that were able to make it to the budget retreat. I think this was probably our most effective, efficient budget retreat that we've had. We are probably leaps and bounds ahead of previous budget preparation years, and a lot of preparation by the staff, Joe Don, Angelica, and the rest of the girls in the office, as well as the department heads. And so you made it to where it's quite a bit more palatable to swallow the financial pill that we have to deal with annually. So thank you guys, as well as the council members, for your participation. Wednesday evening, I'll be participating or be attending the tourism meeting. I've been working with their advertising and promotions committee with branding and logo recognition type things with that. And we will be presenting, I guess essentially, a brand option for tourism approval that if that meets tourism's blessing, we'll be working with -- the committee will be working with Joe Don to see if it has that broader application for the rest of the city. So anyway, that's coming up Wednesday evening. Joe Don has reminded me, and I'll add to this, but Municipal Government Day is going to be on March 27 at the Capitol. It'll start about 8:00 a.m. with breakfast and run most of the day at the Capitol. If you need more information, we've been emailed information from OML, but Joe Don has that. If you plan to attend, we need to register.
Let me know.
So let me know. And then the Northwest Oklahoma Alliance Day is there. It's coming up between now and then as well. We'll get information out on that. Lot of stuff going on. If you've been watching the OML insights, a lot of legislative issues that have potential impacts on our community, as well as the people in it, as well as the operation of our city. So I appreciate everybody staying up to speed on what's coming out of the OML offices there, and we'll continue to point out items of particular interest as they, you know, come across. I'm happy to answer any questions from the counsel. Item I is the city business manager's report. Mr. Dunham?
All right. I'll hit some of the highlights of my written report here before we talk about the financial report. The city should be able to accept debit and credit cards by the end of April. This is something we've been working on. If you remember, last month I reported on this, that this is a no-cost option to the city, and that should be fully intact by the time we send out our bills in April. Our Young Street Tank Farm project is moving along. We are -- the construction is on time and in budget. We did sign a change order for the extra removal of additional four feet of soil below the tank and adding them at the gravel backfield. Part of this work also required us to extend the time a little bit. Also, it's going to require us to just to look at a second change order. We were notified by the tank company that they're going to have to put some additional concrete and rebar into the foundation of the tank. And I'm meeting with engineers on that issue tomorrow. It looks like it's going to be about a $12,000 change order once everything's done. The addition of the concrete base and the rebar on the tank is going to be about $22,000. Then there's a ladder that was originally planned for the interior of the tank. That ladder will be removed. There's some marking on and painting of some piping in the pump house that we will self-perform, and that will be taken out of the budget. And so the net change should be about $12,000. The city just completed a telecom audit. Back in November, I signed an agreement with Spyglass Group, where they performed a telecommunications audit with fees to be paid if they found any mistakes in our telecom bills. They did find about $22,000 worth of billing changes and/or errors, where we would have been charged for things that we shouldn't, such as taxes or service fees, that we would be getting credits on. And it also is savings on lines that we are not using, that we're getting, that we just always had and have discontinued their use. So those were brought to our attention, and there were several lines that we were being charged incorrectly on, that we're getting some rebates and credits on. All in all, we'll have paid about $19,000 over two invoices, and we expect to realize about $58,000 of the savings in our telecommunications bill. That $58,000 would include the five lines that we were going to eliminate anyway because of the storm siren upgrades, and because we informed them about that upfront, they did not charge us on those. One of the things I would like to point out in our water system, as far as a water system update, is that the city's utility billing. And we've made vast improvements over our tracking of our water, from what was being pumped out of the well field to what's being run through our billing system. If we would have looked at this a couple of years, a year or so back, maybe back in 2015, if we would have looked at this, we would have seen that our monthly water loss was 20 to 30 million gallons. That means we were pumping 20 to 30 million gallons more out of the well field than what was running through our billing system. Now, we may not be collecting all of that yet, but over the past two months, that water loss because of the implementations we've done with new water meters, implementations that we've done with AMR, the reduction of read times, replacement of broken water meters, replacement and enhancement of water lines, and quick responses to water leaks, we have reduced that line loss to 1.3 or 2 million gallons. So we've seen a huge reduction there. I think the water department needs to be recognized for that, as well as the utility billing office, to make sure that all of our water is accounted for. The mayor did talk a little bit about the legislative information. I did attend the OML Legislative Committee meeting on March 7. During that meeting, they discussed dockless bike legislation, which could be a -- I could anticipate that being a huge issue to the city of Alba. From what I've seen in other communities, basically, that's a program where, I mean, it sounds good that people could always have a bike laying around that they could just pick up and use, but they end up getting congregated at places and just left there, is what we've seen in other states and other communities. And the dockless bike is a big deal for college communities. It provides the college students ways of traveling from campus to someplace else, but they have been issues where they traveled to and just got left. There was some discussion over bill for bidding and retainage of our purchases. Counties would like to have transferred -- the county property transfer was where counties would just transfer property over to the city for maintenance, that they couldn't take care of or didn't want to. The county's de-annexation approval means that if we were to de-annex any area of Alba, the counties would have to approve that before the de-annexation took place. There was questions over legislation, permitless carry for guns, circuit router program for inspectors, meaning that that program would allow somebody from outside the community to come in and interpret and enforce our building codes. And there was also some occupational licensing bills out there. After these were discussed, the committee voted individually on each bill, but voted to oppose all the bills as they were currently being presented. The other thing that was discussed at some length was state question number 788. Richard Slater from DEA and Susan Rogers, municipal judge, presented information on the state question 788, which is legalization of medical marijuana. This would cause several issues or problems. It has caused several issues and problems in other states, and if it were to pass in the state of Oklahoma, this would mean that we would basically probably nearly be legalizing every type of marijuana, whether medical or recreational. And it would also have the state of Oklahoma with one of the most lenient drug laws in the nation. That was discussed at some length. Of course, that is a state question, so we do not support or -- we're trying to use our platform to get the message out. And of course, you've all got ideas on the House Bill 1033XX, which would have had devastating impact, which would have had a devastating impact on city sales tax revenues if it were to have made it off the floor. It did not make it off the Senate floor, so it's pretty much considered dead at this Our ARC structures, as Brandon reported, are finished except for final inspection. Some of the highlights of the budget, our financials, general fund has collected about $3.4 billion, $3.5 billion from operations, and had $596,000 transferred in from other Through that time, they have either spent or through the end of February, they would either spent or encumbered a little over $5 million. The Alba Utility Authority has collected just a little over $2 million and has spent about $2,154,000 for operations. The capital improvements, we've talked about, some of the upcoming things that we will talk more about the belly dump trailer tonight. We are still looking at getting bid specifications prepared for a new ambulance service to try to get a purchase this year. We'll probably, we'll also be looking at purchasing some of the things that are in the budget, such as bleachers, mowers, and the like. We have, we made about $369,000 worth of principal payments toward long-term debt. When we look at our sales tax and our use tax, we can see that we started out really good in collections, you can say sales and use tax, but through the year, and its anticipation and what's estimated through the year-end, will end up about 1.6% over our collections from last year, or about $70,000. Our utility billing will probably end up about 12% over where it was last year, or at about $3 million. And mayor and counsel, that would be my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item seven is discussion and action on the mayor's appointment of Connor Martin, a city council member for Ward 1, seat 2, for an unexpired term ending in April 2019. As everybody is aware, Mr. Bryce Benson has resigned his seat. We got word of that at the last meeting, and I've been in contact with Mr. Martin, who's been increasingly active in a variety of capacities in our community, both business-wise, as well as public service, and Chamber of Commerce, and a number of other things, and have asked if he would be interested in serving for the remainder of Mr. Benson's term, and he is. And therefore, I ask that you approve his appointment. No one's in the motion.
I can motion to approve the appointment of Connor Martin for the unexpired term ending in April 2019.
I have a motion by Dr. Hanford, and a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the appointment of Connor Martin, a city council member for Ward 1, seat 2, for an unexpired term ending in April 2019. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Item eight is the swearing-in. Connor Martin, please come forward. Raise your right hand and take it. You saw -- Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that you will not knowingly receive correctly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to your office, other than compensation allowed by law? And do you further swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge your duties as councilman for Ward 1, Seat 2, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Great. Connor, welcome. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and, uh, we'll, uh, look forward to your contributions to the council and all of our committees. Item nine, discussion in action on the creation of an Economic Development Committee. This was, uh, brought up at the, at the budget retreat as, as we had a lengthy discussion or had lengthy discussions regarding, um, economic development as it pertains to our city finances and, uh, the need to potentially develop a committee, uh, council committee to, uh, address these issues specifically. Um, that is what, uh, we're voting on right now is the establishment of that committee. We're looking at a three-person city council, or three city council members, um, selected by general fashion as we do with all of our other council committees. Um, and, uh, the purpose would be to promote economic and business development activities in the City of Alba. Um, in your packet, you have, uh, the purpose of the committee is as follows, would be to promote economic development activities for the City of Alba, Oklahoma, support new business development for the city with potential business startups, entrepreneurs, and expanding businesses, support growth and expansion of existing businesses and local business organizations in the city, engage in efforts to establish communication strategies, technical assistance, infrastructure development, funding opportunities, procurement of real property, and other municipal professional assistance to support the growth and expansion of new and existing businesses in the Alba area, cooperate with economic development agencies and organizations to improve the economic development efforts in the City of Alba, pursue grants, agency funding and contributions that benefit the City of Alba economic development efforts, promote enhancements that contribute to the overall attraction to the City of Alba for business recruitment and retention, and work with, or work with the city council, other economic development partners and staff to create economic development opportunities, and promote the City of Alba on a regional, statewide, national, and/or international level to prospective businesses. Okay. Were you appointing members at the same time or just establishing the committee?
That's establishment of the committee first.
Okay.
Members get appointed. With, with, uh, with other changes.
Okay. I would entertain a discussion or a motion to approve this committee.
I'll make a motion to create the Economic Development Committee.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, the second by Mrs. Hamilton, to create the Economic Development Committee of the City Council. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 10 is the mayor's appointment to the Alba City Council Committees. I have them listed here. Okay. So, the changes that have been made.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee.
Ordinance Committee.
Ordinance Committee. Uh, I'm going to just start. Finance Committee, we've got Connor going in for Bryce's position. Ordinance Review, we have Brian going in for Bryce's position. Personnel is unchanged. Parks and building is unchanged. Public Safety Committee is, is that unchanged?
No, um, I think Daniel.
We added, yes.
I think Daniel went in on that instead of Bryce.
Okay. Daniel went into the Public Safety Committee. Sanitation Committee is unchanged. Uh, street and alley is unchanged. Water and sewer committee is unchanged, and the Economic Development Committee would be established with Dr. Haniford, Mr. Hamilton, and Mr. Martin.
Mrs. Hamilton.
Mrs. Hamilton.
He called me down.
And then, uh...
No changes on the board.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we will do that individually.
We'll do the tourism with like, individually. So, just the council committees, um, as presented is what we're voting on.
That was no action.
No action? No action. It is what it is. There.
Just one quick on the ordinance review committee. Might just make that correction on Brian's last name.
Wallace. So, I'm sorry.
You cut it.
I did.
There are other spelling errors that we'll get corrected.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the appointments? I thank you all for your willingness to be moved around and, and, or remain where you are, or take due appointments, so. Item 11 is discussion in action on the mayor's appointment of Mr. Connor Martin to the Tourism and Convention Development Committee for an unexpired term ending June 2020. Again, this would be, uh, Mr. Benson's position on the Tourism and Convention Development And visited with, uh, Mr. Martin, he is willing to take this appointment, and therefore, I recommend council approval.
Move to appoint Connor Martin in place of Bryce Benson for Tourism Convention Development Committee. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Eckhart, to appoint Connor Martin to the Tourism and Convention Development Committee for an unexpired term ending June 2020. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion in action on the appointment of Mr. Connor Martin to the Woods County Industrial Development Authority for an unexpired term ending August 2018. Again, this was a position that Mr. Benson held as a city council representative. I have, uh, discussed this, um, with Mr. Martin and, uh, as well as, um, others involved with that authority, and, uh, therefore, I recommend approval of his appointment.
Move to approve, uh, Mr. Connor Martin to the Woods County Industrial Development Authority. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Eckhart, to appoint Connor Martin to the Woods County Industrial Development Authority for an unexpired term ending in August 2018. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action, let me get it there, on the appointment of Mrs. Megan Caldwell to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending in June 2019. Um, this is for the position held by Chance Schultz, uh, Chance has resigned his seat in February as well, um, to, uh, he's relocating to another community. But, uh, I have talked to Mrs. Caldwell about her ability and willingness and the ability to serve on the Planning Commission, and she is agreeable to, uh, fill this unexpired term, and therefore, I recommend council approval, Mrs. Caldwell, to this, to the Planning Commission.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Megan Caldwell to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending in June 2019.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, the second by Mr. Sherman, to approve the appointment of Megan Caldwell to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending June 2019. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion in action on the purchase of a 2019 ArmorLite Belly Dunk Trailer for the Street Department in an amount not to exceed $29,350. Joe Donham, go ahead.
Well, um, this is a budgeted item for the Street Department. Uh, the, uh, the 2019 ArmorLite Belly Dunk Trailer is a, the, being purchased off of the state contract through Irwin Traders in Mecquah, Oklahoma. The state contract price on this, uh, piece of equipment is $28,900, but we would like to add a $450 electric tarp system for the trailer. Uh, this trailer we use to transport rock and dirt to the, for the Street Department for the purpose of improving our streets. Does it, does have a one-year purchasing label warranty, uh, which was, and it was part of the city's purchasing plan. There was $30,000 budgeted for this purchase.
So, since it's over $25,000, even though it's budgeted, we do need council approval. And, uh, council has any questions for Joe Donham, go ahead. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase.
I make the, I make the motion that we approve the, uh, purchase of a 2019 ArmorLite Belly Dunk Trailer for the Street Department in an amount not to exceed $29,350. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton, and a second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the purchase of 2019 ArmorLite Belly Dunk Trailer for the Street Department in an amount not to exceed $29,350. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion in action on the continuation of contract with Blackboard Connect for the period of April 17, 2018, through April 16, 2019, for an amount not to exceed This is, uh, ever since we've been using Blackboard, but it requires an annual renewal. Is that correct?
The price has not changed since, since 2012. Um, whereas this is in my, this is under my purchasing, uh, limit, I do like to bring it up in council meetings to get the word out for all the people that may have moved in and need to sign up and would like to sign up so they can get, uh, storm their messages from the city. We did get it tweaked last year, uh, so that the NOAA weather alerts and everything are going out as, uh, as contracted for and as they should. Uh, the one, the other thing we implemented last year that we will, uh, again do this year is, uh, Blackboard notification for storm sirens, when the storm sirens are, uh, sounded. Um, we will start sounding the storm sirens during the month of April. I think it is scheduled for the first Wednesday of every month during the storm season at around noon. Um, we will send out a Blackboard notice at that ti, at that time, telling people that the storm sirens are, uh, that it's just a test at this time, uh, don't need to take shelter, but, um, also to get us in the habit of sending that message out every time that storm siren goes out also, so we don't lose that habit. Um, and I, I think that's all the information that I have about this. We receive, but we receive messages via, uh, voice, text, or email.
Do we use it for the, uh, the training? Have we ever had to use any of the training and refresh your courses? Are we using that in the office? It's available to, have we ever had to, have we ever got to use it?
We have never, maybe time to go through that because of staffing changes. We have not, um, done a lot of train, had a lot, the need to have a lot of training on it since we implemented. All department heads were, uh, trained a lot when we first got it, but it might be time to go through that again as a refresh.
And one of the issues we brought up at the training the other day is the phone system. This one delivers up to 10 phones. Will that change any of our, would it stay with the 10 phones?
It'll, it'll be the same. Up to 10 phones, four email addresses, and, uh, one text, uh, four text messages per, per phone contact. So, you can put up to 10 phone numbers in for your contact, and none of that changes.
It's a, it's been more and more important over the years, and I, I, it's working, it works a little better every year for us as well, so, um, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the contract with Blackboard Connect for the period of April 17, 2018, through April 16, 2019, for an amount not to exceed $6,631.55. Is there any further discussion?
Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Question real quick, was the storm siren deal, is that automatic, or does someone have to actually put that in? I mean, it's still like an actual warning.
It is radio activated. It has to be activated by, by human being. It's the, uh, well, no, the storm sign, are we talking about the storm sign with the Blackboard?
No, not Blackboard.
The Blackboard is automatic, except for, uh, we, we added the extra layer of when the storm sirens get sounded, that has to be done by a human. Uh, the, if the NOAA alert goes off or anything else in our area, that is automatic.
Item 16, discussion in action on renewal of the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $30,360.24. Go ahead, Joe Donham.
This is our annual, uh, software maintenance agreement for, uh, for this, for Lifeblood City Hall. I mean, it does our utility billing, it does our accounting, it does our payroll, it does our AR utilities, AR billing, um, our business permits. This software does everything for our city to be able to track our finances. Uh, I recommend very highly that we keep this maintenance agreement up, uh, because it allows us to make phone calls as we need to, to Tyler, to make, uh, fixes when things go wrong.
So, the price?
The price is actually a little bit less than what it was last year. Um, see, last year, I, not by much, I think last year it was, uh, $30,500 something dollars, about $250 some odd dollars less than what it was last year.
Does the maintenance include updates?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does include upgrades and updates.
If there's no further questions for Mr. Dunham, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of annual software maintenance agreements with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $30,360.24.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, and a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to renew the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 17 is discussion in action to enter into executive session for item A pursuant to 25 OS 307B1, to discuss the annual evaluation of the city business manager, Joe Don Dunham. And item B pursuant to 25 OS 307B2, to discuss negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma. I'm going to ask the council members, legal counsel.
Make a motion, go into executive session?
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, a second by Mr. Stelling, to enter into executive session for the two items mentioned. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll ask that the council members remain, the legal counsel as well as the clerk. And Mr. Dunham will call you back in in a second, and then when we finish, we'll call the rest of you back. Item 18 is the return from executive session. Item 19 is action on annual evaluation of city business manager, Joe Don Dunham, as discussed in executive session.
I'll make a motion to approve a very favorable annual evaluation for our city manager, Joe Don Dunham.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, the second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve a very favorable evaluation, annual evaluation of city business manager, Joe Don Dunham. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Item 20 is action on negotiations with the firefighters' union, and there is no action at this time. Item 21 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Item 22, remarks and inquiries by council members.
Like to vote Mr. Connor Martin to his seat?
The hot seat. Ready to get to work? And item 23 is adjournment. Okay, so we will close the city council meeting and open the Alba Utility Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters. Martin.
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on a consent agenda on the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda, and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20, 2018, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on March 3, 2018, approval of claims in the amount of $237,933.22, and payroll expenses of $61,220.05. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, in a second.
I think that the agenda is the same.
You're on the utility, among the utilities.
It is, it is the same for both, I just, I was just looking at that.
You're not going crazy.
I apologize to them. It just saves two different names.
Claims are different, but the title is the same.
Okay, okay. Do you need, the posted agendas are the correct maps, do you need, is it the electronic files that are wrong, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, apologize for that.
If you all had paper, it'd be correct.
I like paper.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second. Wait a minute, I already had a motion. I had a motion from Mr. Sherman, a second from Mr. Wallace, to approve the consent agenda.
I was confused with the amount then.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Mr. Wallace, Willis. Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
We'll close the Alba Utility Authority meeting and open the Economic Development Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters. Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda on the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda, and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20, 2018. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on March 3, 2018. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $108,023.61, and payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent, move back. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.